I'd like to call to order the regular session. Time is 7:35 and the date is March 26th. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
President.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of March 5th, March 6th, and March 12th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session, March 12th, 2012.
I move approval of the regular session, March 12th.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0-0. Would any councilperson like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. First license is a resolution granting a Victorlin license to Dave's Coffee LLC, 396 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. Application by David Lanning for Oxford Street, Westerly, Rhode Island. This is a new license and it is continued from March 12th. Is David Lanning here or somebody here to represent Dave's Coffee?
Yes.
If you could come to the podium, welcome. And this is your opportunity to talk and tell us a little bit about your endeavor with Dave's Coffee. And you have the cameras, so.
Okay. Well, we're planning to open in Wakefield. I don't know if you know our coffee bar in Charlestown, Rhode Island, but we found a really nice spot in Wakefield. We have a fairly good customer base here and are excited to bring our coffee and baked goods to Wakefield.
That's great.
Yeah.
Questions here at the table? Polly?
Will you be serving just baked goods and coffee? What type of coffee do you have? Do you have lattes?
We do. We have espresso-based drinks, so it's lattes, ice drinks, and then regular drip coffee. And then baked goods, like muffins and cookies, things like that.
Right. Will you be making sandwiches or?
No.
No? It's all to do with coffee?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Other questions? Kathy?
Did you have a mobile truck too that I see your Dave's truck?
Um, no.
Just for advertisement purposes?
Well, it's a truck that we got more for promotion than, it's not a mobile setup like a food truck or anything inside.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was unsure what that, I see it when I head down towards the Westerly area there. So you're in with the Galapagos?
Exactly.
But it's not the clothing store, it's just going to be the coffee?
Just the coffee bar.
Coffee bar.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Further questions? Carol?
Now, you're going where the old Orbeez was? Is that the location?
Yes.
Okay. And what are your hours of operation?
We're going, our hours in Charlestown are six to six. And we're going to try to do a little bit later here because I think there's more activity at night, so maybe six to seven to start and then see.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
And when do you plan on opening?
I'm hoping for end of May, beginning of June.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Jim?
That means you're doing a lot of internal work there. Those windows have been sealed shut now for about a month.
Yeah. Yeah, we have another little issue we have to deal with, with parking. So it's kind of, we're holding off a little bit until that's all squared away. So it actually slowed things down a little bit. So, yeah. But we are going to make it, a lot of improvement inside the building.
Okay, look forward to it. I'm basically next door, so.
Good, good.
Nice to have someone there.
All right. Any other questions? All right, this is exciting. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Wait. I move approval of.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to.
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
You'll see all of us there, I'm sure.
All right.
Which brings us to license B. This is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Cox Solutions Store, 35 South County Commons Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and the Communications Superintendent. Application by Irene Fakara, 170 Utopia Road, Manchester, Connecticut. This again is a new license and it's continued from March 12th. Welcome.
I'm not Irene, but I am Tina Rogers. I'm the manager of the solution store in the South County Commons. So we've been there for a little while, but we've now evolved from a digital store to a solution store. So we not only offer services, but we sell retail with modems, routers. So it's kind of a one-stop shop for our customers, which we're finding is really good for us and for our customers. So we're really excited to have the holiday hours and we've actually changed some of our hours. We've shortened some. We're now nine to six Monday through Saturday and Sundays 12 to 5. So we find it works a little bit better, but we want to be available to our holiday traffic down here, you know, Labor Day weekend, the seasonal traffic. So we want to be able to provide the services to the customers when they need them.
Sounds good. Questions here at the table? Jim?
Maybe more to Steve. Steve, what is, $50? What's the charge for the holiday license by the town? Fifty even? Okay. And that covers seven holidays? How many holidays?
I don't think we're open all of.
Doesn't really matter.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we're going to be primarily open Memorial Day and Labor Day. We find those to be the biggest ones down there. You know, they asked me about 4th of July. I'm from South Kingston and this time I'm like, do not do it. It's not a good idea. People are out enjoying the day and, you know, we don't want to take away from that and it's not good for us or anybody else, so.
Then we really appreciate it. Only two days for the $50.
Well, exactly. See, it's even better for you.
Polly?
So you deal with your Cox customers?
Yes, we do. We also, within the solution store here, which I neglected to mention, we have Flint Audio Video in there with us as well. We host them in our store and we're in their location in Middletown. And they provide TVs, any type of service. I mean, they sell the TVs, but they have outstanding customer service as well with, you know, setting up the equipment in your home many times free of charge, coming out and doing surveys of what you would need to have in your home to make it work the way that you want. And we've found that their customer service, we feel, matches our own and it's a really good match. We've had really good feedback from our customers and even our mystery shops that we've had in the location from our residents here in town. So it's very good.
Thank you. So you'll be more complete than just?
We will be. And as I say that, you know, I had my manager or my, you know, our manager for New England and today, and he's from Connecticut. And I said, you have to understand, when you're in Rhode Island and South Kingston, you don't go past the towers.
You got it.
So if we can house it in here, it's a good thing. And we're finding that to be the case. So he's getting it. I'm like, see, it makes sense. We just don't go past the towers. So he's like, oh, all right. So he says, I see what you're saying. I go, it's just how it is, so.
Jim?
So will you be handling the technical questions? Because every time I call, I seem to wind up in some unknown place in North America.
You need to come see us down here. Well, locally, we are starting to take those calls back in our call center. But locally, within all of our solution stores, one of the things that we're really focusing on is we have educators. These educators are specifically in mind to help customers with any problem that they have. I actually had the educator in there today, setting up a customer's router, locking it down, making sure it was good and having everything that he needed for when he left and a number to call back directly to us in the store and not to a call center. So we're really taking back that ownership and the localism to bring it back into our communities.
Thank you.
Jim, I can attest to that. I've been down there and believe me, they have given me more information and set me straight.
Very good.
They are wonderful.
Excellent.
Yeah. Any other questions here at the table? Okay, can we have a motion?
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Tina, bring best of luck from Town Council.
Thank you very much. We hope to see you all.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Our third license is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to South County Art Supply, 237 Robinson Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. Application by Andrea Peters?
Peitch.
Peitch?
Yeah, Peitch.
Peitch?
Yeah, Peitch.
Okay. Thank you. 183 High Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Welcome Andrea.
Thanks.
If you could just tell a little bit about this art supplies. It's great.
Well, I want to open an art supply store that I think will serve the community and URI students and possibly tourists somewhat. So I want it to be open on Sundays during the summer. And I think that's what I filed. I'm not sure if it was a holiday, is it Sunday and holiday? Is that the same? It's the same thing? Okay.
So questions here at the table for Andrea? Polly?
What types of material? And are you doing children's as well as?
Yeah, I'm going to do children's and then I want to have a, one kind of professional quality line of supplies across the board and then more like a student grade of everything paints and drawing stuff.
And pastels?
Yep.
And papers and?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great.
Yeah. And we'll have some classes too, I think.
That'd be nice, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's going to be great.
Thank you.
It's turning into an arts district down there.
Yeah.
Kathy?
So I assume you're an artist?
Yes.
Did you study locally at the Rhode Island School of Design or?
I have taken classes at RISD and at the Guild, actually.
Oh, yeah.
And I have a business. I'm a silhouette artist, so I do a lot of traveling with that. And this will be nice to have like a regular thing that I don't have to drive all over the country to do.
Yeah, it's a good idea. There's definitely a need for it down here. Good idea.
Thanks.
Beautiful. Any other questions? Jim?
Thought I read about somewhere whether you could easel to go with all the paints, brushes, such a thing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I thought like a watercolor kit for people to take to the beach would be good.
Yep, all right. Great idea.
Okay. Carol?
I think you'll do well down here because I do think there are a lot of artists, whether they're professional or they're taking classes, but quite a few. I know my mother used to paint and she used to go to Providence to buy supplies or, you know.
Yeah. That's what gave me the idea was that I had, I would go all over to like three or four places in town and then end up going to Providence.
Yeah.
But I feel like if people knew there was one place where most likely they would get what they needed, they would go there first, so.
Yeah, great idea.
Thank you.
Exciting. Any further questions here at the table?
I move approval of new license for C.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Andrea, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And license D is a resolution granting a Victorlin license to Chemco, 32 Whispering Pine Way, Exeter, Rhode Island, for concession operations at Old Mountain Field in the Town Beach, subject to a water of the concession operations contract and administrative approvals. Application by Kenneth Elliott, Whispering Pine Way, Exeter, Rhode Island. And this is a new license. Might you be Kenneth?
Kenneth Elliott. The F is for Franklin.
And if you'd like to tell us?
Yes. We have been food concessioners for several years dating back to Wickford Town Beach, which we had the contract there for five years. We proceeded on to Scarborough Beach and we were there for 10 years. Unfortunately, there was a out-of-town concessionaire that came in and liked Scarborough better than I did and we were outbid. Hence, we had been looking for other concessions to run and ran into this situation and we're here to give you our services.
That's great. Questions here at the table? Jim, did I see a hand? And then Polly? No?
Oh, no, I was drinking a little water. I'm sorry. No, you saw Polly's hand.
Polly?
I wondered what kind of things, what kind of foods do you serve at your concessions?
It will be somewhat limited because your facilities don't allow for us, you don't have the proper ancil systems in your buildings, so we can't do any fried foods. However, we will be doing hot dogs, hamburgers, cheeseburgers. A limited menu. There will be ice cream. There also will be a product that's, we developed and it's called Baby Elliott's Frozen Lemonade. And that'll be available at all of the areas that we'll be covering.
Sounds good. Sounds like good concession food.
It is.
Other questions here at the table? Carol?
There's no french fries at the beach?
Well, you can't because unfortunately, you don't have an ancil system in your building.
Oh.
And without that, it's somewhat difficult.
I guess.
We don't want to burn your buildings down.
No, no, no. I'm just surprised. I always thought there were. Not that I've been ordering them, but.
And now that we have a place to recycle the grease.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyways, all right. Further questions here for Kenneth?
Just, Ella, you said, I hate to take you back to Scarborough, may be painful, but did those folks just bid on the Scarborough contract alone or all the state beaches? What, can you just break it down for me without giving away a whole lot of?
Yeah, the state beaches are revolved on a five-year interim. And they're entitled, anybody that can bid them, provided that they're qualified. And the company that came out of Maryland was highly qualified. And it's not who bid the lowest, it's who bid the highest. And they outbid us by a considerable number.
Okay. And they just bid for Scarborough or all the concessions for all the state beaches?
Individually.
Individually.
And they all normally come up all at the same time.
Okay.
So Chemco, needless to say, will be there in another two years and we will be bidding again.
Okay, great, great.
Further questions here at the table? Carol?
Do you have any other concessions around the state?
Presently, we do not.
But you're looking for some, I would say.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Social Security doesn't do it.
Oh, I know. I hear you.
We certainly want you to do well.
Any last-minute questions? Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor?
No.
Sorry. I am just like.
I move approval of new license D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0-0. Kenneth Franklin Elliott, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, which brings us to our public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to filing the program year 2012 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application for the purposes of reviewing the draft application and obtaining citizen views on the proposed activities. The local priority list is shown on Exhibit 1, attached here too. The town is eligible to apply for $300,000 in funds for the purpose of undertaking activities that meet one of the following three named national objectives. First one is urgent needs. Second is prevention, elimination of slums or blight. And the third is activities benefiting low, moderate income persons. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
The application for this public hearing tonight is the second of two public hearings that are required for the application process, for the municipality to apply for a small cities development block grant program. The first hearing was held on February 27th of this year when we solicited proposals from various human service agencies for funding consideration for the 2012 grant year. For the 2012 year, municipalities are able to submit funding requests with a maximum dollar amount of $300,000. This is $100,000 less than what the funding levels had been in prior years based on federal cutbacks in the funding for the CDBG program. For the 2012 application, we received 14 proposed activities from various organizations. Staff has prepared a draft local priority listing for the activities and the recommended grant funding amounts for each of those agencies. Staff has recognized that all of the requests presented are worthwhile projects. However, the applications do require and necessitate the ranking of the activities. What we're looking at in terms of priorities are, one, critical service, public facilities that serve low and moderate income households. Second, housing for low and moderate. Third, employment and job training for low and moderate income residents, as well as other service and facilities. If you go to Exhibit 1, and we'll run through the applications and the funding, the priority funding proposal is one Johnny Cake Center of Peastale. This is the emergency food pantry and the school vacation breakfast and lunch program, as well as the employment job skills program that is administered through the Johnny Cake Center of Peastale for $20,000. Second is the rehabilitation of the Tetra Senior Center Xanax. This includes some of the major renovation activities that were presented and adopted within the council's capital improvement program for the next six years. They include replacement of windows as well as exterior shingling installation and siding replacements. The third activity is Welcome House to offset their operating expenses associated with the emergency shelter. Fourth is Welcome House again for re-roofing of two of the affordable housing duplex units that are owned by Welcome House. The fifth is the Habitat for Humanity. This is a $57,400 funding proposal which will assist in offsetting costs associated with the construction of the four affordable housing units currently under construction on Old North Road in Kingston. Sixth is the Domestic Violence Resource Center, renovations of their safe house. And that's actually a major project for domestic violence where they'll be converting the existing communal living arrangements into four separate transitional housing units as well as having two bedrooms set aside for emergency shelters. Seventh activity is the Washington County Community Development Corp. There's really two applications, one application this year, that's for operating expenses associated with the regional agency and that assists the town in identifying and working toward meeting affordable housing goals. If you recall, last year, we had also given them through this program $4,000 toward the operating expenses and about $90,000, which was for property acquisition that was then renovated into affordable housing unit in town. The Sensational Child is a job training program that provides assistance to South Kingston residents. Education Exchange is for personnel and equipment expenses associated with their program for getting people through education necessary for our GED certification. Number 10 is the Neighborhood Revitalization, Peastale Revitalization. This proposal, if funded, would provide necessary design and construction of a bus shelter, of an artistic design, according to Leslie, that would be located in Peastale. The number 11 is Galilee Mission. This is rehab of existing transitional housing units that they have in Narragansett. Number 12, again, would be Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization. The proposal here is to provide equipment and materials to develop an audio walking tour of historic Peastale. The 13th activity is Community Housing Land Trust. These would be operating expense subsidies. They provide technical assistance in land banking activities, again, for affordable housing purposes. And the final activity, number 14, was the Rhode Island Center for Assistance to Those in Need. And this would be, again, operational support for the food pantry that operates in Charleston. This program also received funding in the current year. There'd also be program administration, the amount of $12,000 for a total application of $300,000. I would suggest that with the cutback from the 400 to the 300 in total funding levels, we'll probably see what had been funded at about a $296,000 in the current year will probably be phased down someplace in the target of around $200,000. Again, our priorities that are listed here are local priorities. They will then be evaluated and the state has the opportunity to set what they see as the final priority and the award of grant itself. The next step in our public hearing process would be to have the council adopt the proposed application fundings as presented this evening or to revise if necessary. Once that's completed, the information would then be transmitted to the planning board, who must then certify that each of the program activities are in accord with the town's comprehensive community plan. Then at that point, we would have the application submitted to the state for funding. I'd also note that CDBG is a long-term program. It's been in operation since 1985 was the first year of funding for this program and South Kingston has been successful each and every year. One program activity which isn't listed this year is the Community Development Block Grants Contribution toward the housing renovations and rehab program. That was funded, I believe, at $90,000 in the current year. We've currently got sufficient funds for the next year. That program's administered for the town through the CAP Agency. At this point, they've got, I believe, about 15 pending applications that should be processed over the next year. We're finding with the rehab program, with the change in banking availability, as well as how tough the economy is, that we are able to fund that program once every two years. Every other year, we're able to provide the contribution. So it's not a case where there will not be housing rehabilitation money available for the 2012-13 year, but rather that there's adequate funding source available to be able to continue that based on the existing 2011-year funding level. I'd be glad to answer any questions council or public may have relative to the application that the town hopes to file.
Thank you, Steve. Questions here at the table? Carol?
Steve, you listed in your memo the top six as the main priority. I use, do you think we may not get the full $300,000?
We normally don't. We normally would not see the full funding that's available. We can apply up to 300, but the final decision is made through the state when they look at all of the applications that are submitted by all the cities and towns. And the reason I think it'll be less than 300 is that with a 20% decrease in the funding level from the federal government to the state for 2012 and then going down where we were, we had applied for $400,000 last year, got $296,000. So if we see the same type of relationship, we'll probably be in the $200,000 area.
So it would go by priority, so?
No, not necessarily.
No.
The state has the right to be able to revise the priorities based on looking at our applications. That may be one of the reasons that Food Pantry in Charleston may be looked at as being a high priority when the state looks at the mix and match, because they'll be looking at the Westerly application to Charleston application. And what their objective is, is to look beyond the geographic boundaries of each of the towns to ensure that the distribution of the community development funds are going where they're meeting the most purpose for low and moderate income, either for the food, the housing, or the jobs and training.
So they could reprioritize that priority list?
Yes, they can and they do.
Jim?
Sorry, Carol.
I just have one more question. Would it change the amount you give to each, the funding request and the application amount? Could the state then say, "Well, we don't want to give, we want to give some to," like you use the example of the Rycan that they might want to give to them and take some away from another organization?
Yes, they could.
And say, "Okay, instead of giving 20,000, we'll give 15?"
That's why it's important for us to tell them what our priorities are. But if we're looking for 300,000 and they're going to phase it down to 200, they may take dollars out of each of them. Instead of giving 5,000, it may be a $3,000 if they wanted to distribute it to all the agencies. Or what they may do is to cut one of the major funding levels, possibly the Tetra Senior Center Annex, would be looked at as a standalone that they could cut sufficient or multiple funds from. But again, this will be based on the state's review, not just of our application, but really on a regional basis.
Thank you. Jim?
I just, I'd like to believe that all of these agencies are most deserving. It's, I hate for us to put together a priority list and then have the state decide that they know better, but really a shame that we cannot help everybody here, because even 2/3 of the grant would go, just do wonders for all of these programs. We wind up getting 200,000 instead of the 300,000. So I guess my question is, over the last few years, have we been on the money with our priorities? And pretty much, that's the way it's come down, the top five or six. And if that's the case, are we discouraging these other folks from seeking money and coming in with their applications?
No, I don't think so, Jim. If you look at the 2011 application, the CDC got $4,000. The Housing Information Program got 1,500. Welcome House expenses did get 20,000. Johnny Cake did get 20,000. Fundamist had got 5,300. So there was a distribution with nine to 10 different agencies receiving limited funding, not 100% of what they asked for. 2010 year, there were 10 agencies that received funding. Same with 2009, there was 11. So there's a lot of money that is going out in small denominations, $2,000 to $5,000, but the major programs, like the housing rehab, when we need the money, those are full funded. Johnny Cake has never been underfunded, and we're seeing a greater effort. You know, three years ago, we picked up $250,000 in total grants. 90 of that went into the Adult Days program. So I think that we've seen a good deal of the priorities that we've set funded, but obviously, it's not funded at the same $300,000 level. I wouldn't expect to see it at that level. But it also depends on how many applications are filed by the other cities and towns, and whether they're all asking for the same dollar amount. You know, since 1985, I think we've collected almost $4.4 million out of this program. But the average in the last couple of years has been in the $250,000 range. So I think it'll continue to go down. There is action in Congress at this point for reappropriation on CDBG. There was a letter that went out on the Senate side asking, in fact, our local senators were signatory on that letter, asking for several billion to be added back into this program. If that's the case, they may have a supplemental appropriation that could come forward, and there may be additional funding that's available. But at this point, we know that the max we can write for is 300, and we never see the max come to us.
Yeah, well, maybe Congress will, maybe it could be some supplemental budget. And my last question, the Tetra, however you pronounce that, Senior Center Annex, is that a state agency?
No, that is what was the original facility before we built the main building. It's the area that, it's the barn, what had been the original barn on the property and had been the meal site. That now is used as, for the food storage that is distributed through the state agency. It's also used for quilting and for knitting and storage of the various arts and craft projects. The overall objective would be to be able to renovate that space, and that was included in the capital improvement program over the next six years. As the needs of the senior program continue to expand, and they will continue to expand as we go forward, that as we need additional space, rather than having to put in addition on the main building, that we would recapture the two older buildings that are there and bring them back up to a U standard.
Thank you. Always learning something new.
Thank you. Further questions here at the table? Kathy?
We don't see any problems with any of these with the planning board as far as meeting the town comprehensive plan. Do you see any problems?
No, not at all. You know, the planning department's, the department that processed the application, and certainly is able to make representation on each of these, is meeting the conditions of the comprehensive community plan. So no, I don't suspect there's any problem with that.
And I want to say, you did a good job, Steve, presenting this, but you're no Ray Nickerson. I miss Ray. This is always his baby. Sorry, Steve. He does not respond to them.
None at all.
He's speechless. We could always ask for a guest appearance next year. Any further questions here at the table? Okay, I'm, did you want to continue?
No, just the, if the council would consider using the resolution, it's on Page Two of the memorandum.
Yeah, I'm going to open it up to the public first, and then we do have that resolution. All right, so at this time, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the microphone up for any public comment on public hearing A. I'd like to acknowledge that Peggy Benz from Education Exchange is present. Hi, Peg. You want to say a few words? I was hoping, because you have a great organization.
Well, I would just like to thank the support that we've had from the town of South Kingston in the last several years. We've faced some strong difficulties, and the town has been very supportive for us. And mostly, you know, through the Community Development Block Grants, since July 1st of this year, we have been able to assist over 75 residents of South Kingston through our doors. We have our main office being in Peasdale, but we have sites in Westerly and North Kingston. But 28% of our clients come from South Kingston, and I'd like to thank you for all the support that you've given us. So many times, we hear about the disconnect between the job market and the workers, and your support helps us make that connection to educate the workforce so that we have skilled workers to enter those jobs, and thank you very much.
We also want to thank you, Peg, because you have a great program, so. Any other comments from the public?
Seeing none, then, Ella, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
We have motion in a second. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any last-minute comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. I think we have that motion.
I move that to authorize the filing of the PY 2012 Small Cities Community Block Grant Program application for an amount not to exceed $300,000, and in accordance with the local priority list, as shown on Exhibit One attached here, too. I move.
Second?
So move.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0.
But it's the presentation is what I was talking about.
Thank you, Steve, and express our thanks to Ray as well. Okay, which brings us to Communications 8A. This is a resolution adopted February 22nd, 2012 by the Barville Town Council in support of General Assembly Bill 2012, House 7561, an act relating to elections, registration of voters that would provide for the use of post office boxes for the purposes of acknowledgement of registration, or change of address and verification of residence in those cases where the prospective voter does not receive home mail delivery, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. Polly?
We discussed this in the work session, and apparently, we only have 40 such cases in South Kingston, but I don't remember what we decided to do. Did we decide to support this because it looks like a good thing, or did we decide to? I move that we support it.
I would also move to support it as well, but I do have a question for Dale. When these people that did not receive the notification show up at the polls and are told, you know, they have to fill out this form, is it a lengthy form, do you know? It's quick.
It's like a duplicate registration form. So it's your name, address, party affiliation, signature, and you go in.
Yeah, I could support it.
I just wanted to ask, Dale, could you clarify what you told us at the work session about why it doesn't really affect the voters we have here?
Well, it doesn't really affect them, because when they go to the polls, they're inactive. But in order to get active, they have to fill out this, it's called an affirmation card. And what an affirmation card is, is really just a registration form. So it re-registers them, and then they go and they vote. They're allowed to vote.
Great.
So I think supporting it would be fine.
Okay.
Any other comments? Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you. Which brings us to Communication C. This is a communication dated March 8th, 2012, from Senator Bethany Mora, District 19, seeking support for the General Assembly Bills 2012, Senate 2371 and 2012, House 7746, acts relating to property, mortgage foreclosure and sale that would require that foreclosure deeds be recorded within 30 days of foreclosure, and would increase the penalties for violation of this requirement, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discussed this also at the work session, and I believe we discussed that this would just increase penalties to persons who had their properties foreclosed on, and we decided to place it on file.
Second?
We have motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We have Communication D. This is a resolution adopted March 13th, 2012, by the Exeter West Greenwich School Committee in opposition to General Assembly Bills 2012, House 7617. And, House, I'd like you to correct, instead of 7260 in our agenda here, it is 7620, regarding binding arbitration for teacher and other school employees, in opposition to House 7250 and Senate 2532, that would mandate continuation of expired teacher contracts, and in support of Senate 2158, House 7272 and House 7863, that would move the teacher layoff notice deadline from March 1st to June 1st, are received and placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discussed this also at the work session, and we have, we discussed accepting the entire resolution, and in so doing, that would be, we join Exeter West Greenwich in their opposition regarding binding arbitration for teachers and other school employees, and also, we would be in opposition, join them in their opposition to mandating the continuation of expired teacher contracts. But on the other hand, we would support them in their resolution that would move the teacher layoff notice deadline from March 1st to June 1st. So I think we can do this all in one swoop, and I didn't say all the bills, but I think we have them listed pretty well.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Kathy?
And as I discussed, too, in the work session, it'd be interesting to see what our legislators have to say about this, since we've sent up this before, and they had different votes, so I hope that we can forward this on for discussion when we do set up a legislative meeting, again, with our legislators in the future, just to let them know and get clear on all the numbers and where we stand with them. I think it would be a good idea to continue to do that, too. I'd like to see where they stand on them all.
Could I ask one suggestion? It says regarding binding arbitration for teachers and other school. I'd ask that you amend that to be other school and/or municipal employees, because one of the bills is related to Municipal Employee Arbitration Act, which would be outside of the teachers.
So you agree with that?
To make that amendment?
All second? All right, and Kath, were you looking for adding on?
No, I'm just, I just want to make it, bring it forward when we do have our meeting with our legislators, whenever we do set that up in the future, that this is something that we discuss.
All right, great. Carol?
I just wanted to say one thing about moving the layoff notices from March 1st to June 1st. It seems to make sense, especially in light of the fact that the school districts and the municipalities have not, by March 1st, we have not yet finalized our budgets, and therefore, we'll, you know, we're pink-slipping people without a concrete idea of how many would go. And this should avoid, the extension of the layoff notice should avoid the unnecessary anxiety and stress for teachers receiving layoff notices that wouldn't ordinarily receive them if the date were later in the year. I just wanted to mention that.
No, that's a good point, Carol. Any further discussion here at the table? We have motion in a second. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Next is a Communication E. This is a communication received March 21st, 2012, from Jonathan Daly-Labelle, requesting that the town council review their rules of decorum, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. And I'll give Jonathan Daly-Labelle a chance if he wishes to address this. I'd like to state that during our work session, we talked about some ground rules here for decorum at the town council table, and I'll just summarize them, that we will be waiting to be acknowledged by the chair before we speak. And we're also going to reiterate that we will try to limit any sidebar conversations here at the table, promote positive body language and any kind of distractful behavior, as well as maintaining respect. We recognize that every member here in the town chambers, as well as the public, has the right, freedom of speech, but we're asking that there be no personal attacks or any kind of disrespect. We realize that we are a very diverse group here, sitting at the town council table, and sometimes you have discourse to get to some resolution, but we are in agreement that it should be done respectfully, and at the end of the night, that we should walk out of the town chambers respecting one another. We would also hold the public to this accountability that we're holding ourselves to here at the town council table. Would any town councillor like to add anything else? The cell phone use also, we talked about during our work session. And there is a sign out in the town hall, and we have discussed, it used to say that we would shut cell phones off. It has now been changed to, we will silence cell phones, but we are going to add that there will be no texting in the town chambers. We have discussed that we all have families at home, and if people would like, you know, to respond to their children through texting, or any kind of text message that comes in, they may leave the town chambers and, you know, do the texting or the use of the cell phone out there. So that was agreed upon. Would any town councillor like to respond to anything that we've discussed before I open this up to Jonathan Daly-Labelle? And I'm not sure that you'd like to respond to your letter, or?
Jonathan Daly-Labelle, thank you for recognizing this communication and allowing me to come up and speak to this. I was here for the work session, so I heard the discussion there. I've heard what's said here, and that, it sounds very good to me. A lot of it's just common courtesy, and sometimes just need, you know, people need reminders every so often. So, you know, I guess I hope that it is enforced, and I think it really may just be as simple as, you know, when there's, when an issue arises, addressing it at that time. And I think the thing that was really the most striking to me was seeing some of the public officials at that last school committee, town council meeting, you know, a few school committee members texting while the administrators are presenting and the conversations going on. And so that's such a simple, basic thing, and when people can't even do the simple, basic things right, then I think that they lose sight of the bigger things very quickly after that. Thank you.
There's also further discussion that we had that I also want to just elaborate a little bit on. It was also discussed in the work session that when people come to the microphone, if there is incorrect information, any town councillor here at the table will address it through the chair, and the information will be corrected. it through the chair, and the information will be corrected. We also talked about any accusations of dishonesty or personal attacks for anyone here at the Town Council table. Again, if a town counselor feels offended or grieved, they will address it through the chair, and I will allow them to speak and address the person at the microphone. We had that discussion with our town solicitor, and I think that that's what we agreed with. Also, we talked about any repetitiveness at each meeting that is brought up, unless there is new information that have, has arisen, then we will just ask for, you know, that it's already been stated at a prior meeting, and unless there is new information, we'll ask that it not be brought forward. Did I capture everything that was discussed in the work session? Did I miss anything? Jim?
I don't think you missed anything, I just wanted to acknowledge Jonathan's letters. I too, for that work session with the school committee, just shook my head there, the last two or three members there, just with the cellphone action. This is a sixty million dollar part of our budget, and everybody's not on board, paying attention, and those darn cellphones, we're at the ready by two, if not three, of them at the end of the table, and it's just simply appalling. I mean, it's as though they don't have to come, it's as though we're just automatically, we'll give them the sixty million dollars with no discussion. And the other thing that Jonathan wrote about, which we did talk about in the work session, which we really cannot do anything about with the school committee issue here, it's, basically, the school committee business, the Town Council certainly has no authority without going through incredible effort to ever remove someone from office, I think anything short of a felony. Certainly, we're concerned, when, especially up here at the council, you know, I certainly know just how hard we work up here, and how appreciative we are of the confidence of the voters who put us up here. We respect that charge, and we certainly work hard at it. Believe me, I've never seen a council really quite work so hard, outside of the ordinary business of the chambers here, and so, it's very impressive and very discouraging when someone does not take the charge as seriously as we do, but there isn't anything, I believe, that we can do about it. Thank you all.
So you kind of jumped to the next communication?
Yeah, well, we just saw it all together there, but this-
All right, I'm, any further discussion here at the table? Okay. At this time, do we have a motion to place this on file? I'm sorry? Please come forward. How are you, Dorold?
Dorold Beasley. Could you just expound on your cellphone usage? Because having not heard any of this before tonight, it sounded like you're saying that you can't answer your phone, you could be on vibrate, you can't answer it, you could look at it, if you get a text message, but you couldn't respond to the text message. Is that basically right?
Unless you want to leave the town, go out in the town hallway here, in the town chambers. Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does that help? Thank you. Anyone else like to respond from the public? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we place Communication E on file.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to, let's see, Communication F. This is a communication dated March twenty-first, two thousand twelve, from Jonathan Daly-Labelle, relative to meeting attendance by public officials, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and I think Jim just discussed this a minute ago, and we said we would place it on file for all the reasons that Jim just listed, I think many of them.
Right. I will go through and explain that in order for something to be placed, to make a change in the town charter, it must, the Town Council has to write a resolution, goes to the General Assembly, and then requesting that something be placed on the ballot to vote on, and then there would be a charter amendment, or sometimes the Town Council appoints a Charter Review Commission. And we felt during the work session that we did not think that, that was something that the Town Council felt that they should do at this time. And the second paragraph of Jonathan's letter, asking the Town Council to pass a resolution for the resignation of a school community member, feel like that, that is not a position that the Town Council would like to take at this time, that it would really set up a position with the school committee that we need a good working relationship with. So if you'd like to address it, or if, please come to the microphone, and maybe there's more questions.
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm disappointed, I heard the work session discussion, and, you know, I hear what you're saying here, so, you know, I understand, you know, I think I understand what you're saying, and it's logical what you're saying. You know, I'm disappointed that that's the action you're taking, but, I mean, you know, I can live with it. You know, and the two communications I sent, they do kind of overlap, you know, and, you know, so, but I think a lot of it, you know, the decorum, you know, does tie in with respect for the process, procedure, representation, community members, and then, you know, meeting attendance, you know, ties right in as well. You know, if you can't make meetings, you know, really, what are you saying, you know, to the community, the people that have put you in that seat? And I think a lot of it comes from that, for whatever reason, you know, people get in the seats, not everybody, of course, and, you know, but too many people get in the seats, and they start to think it's their seat, and it's not, it's not their seat, it's the public's seat. And I think if people kind of kept that, you know, maybe that's something that, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir here, you guys run good meetings, you know? The school committee, it's a mess, I'm sorry. You know, and I, just in this communication, I say the faith the public had a reason to have has been irreparably broken, you know, I really believe that. And, you know, a friend of mine gave me a comment, he said that for him, this summed up how he thinks of, of that issue of meeting attendance, you know, as well as fulfilling your other obligations. Running for elected office is optional, fulfilling the obligation should be mandatory. You know, and so I don't know how you can build in that accountability, and I guess I would like to, you know, to say this is not personality-driven, this is not personal. You know, it seems that maybe there's that thought process at school committee that that, that that's what they think it is. It's really public servants, you know, trying to serve the public, and this is what is happening this term, but the previous term, there was a member that had missed a lot of meetings, and so I think that's where I say that I'm disappointed, because there is a track record of this, of this happening, and is it going to happen next time? You know, I guess maybe the third time, you look at it differently, I don't know. So, you know, concerns with school committee beyond lack of meeting attendance, you know, last year, they came up with kind of an irregular meeting schedule, for a while, they stopped recording half of their meetings, making it available. I don't know if people realize it, because it's kind of, I think it's a shocking thing, I don't think people really think about this. At the school committee meeting, I'll start it this way, Town Council, member of the public comes up, okay, makes a comment, has a question, the elected officials, who are acting as public servants, respond when appropriate. Over at school committee, you go up to speak, nothing. They don't respond.
If I could just interrupt. We did, you know, have some legal counsel, and as far as jurisdiction of the school committee, Jonathan, there's, there's nothing that, that we legally can do about that. For many years, there was not a strong relationship, working relationship with the Town Council and the school committee, this has gone back many, many, many years. I would hate to jeopardize the working relationship that we have with our school committee, because in the long run, the kids end up losing out. So we hear, you know, your concerns, I know that you have brought them to the school committee table, but really, you know, there's not, there's not anything that we can do here at the Town Council table, you know, to address the needs, the concerns that you have with the school committee.
All right, well, I guess I'll, you know, I'll ask you to consider this, is that, is the relationship jeopardized when, you know, you're here, you attend your meetings, you're doing your work, and again, it's not just one person, there's becoming a track record that they're not doing what their job is. So, you know, as Town Council, I would think that you say, well, wait a minute, school committee doesn't have the same professionalism, courtesy, regard for public service, I would think that that starts to jeopardize the relationship. So, you know, just look at it from different things, different angles, I just want clarity that, you know, just for the record, school committee bylaws call for members to fulfill their obligations by participating in meetings, the method of participation is discussion, deliberation, debate, and voting, they're supposed to accept and encourage a variety of opinions from, and communicate with the community, they're supposed to make public relevant information to promote communication and understanding between the school and community, and it does say, attend all regularly scheduled committee meetings, so it's not, it's not optional. And then further on in the bylaws, you know, and there's all these duties, which if you're not there, you're not, you're not fulfilling your duties. And then, so just now, the other thing is, I mean, this is important for you to be aware of, and I think it's important for the public to be aware of, and the reason I'm going on here tonight is, I would have spent more time on this tomorrow night at school committee, but they just canceled their meeting. They're supposed to have two meetings a month, they just canceled one of them. So it's impossible for somebody to bring school committee business, school committee concerns, if they choose to abandon their open public meetings. So I am sorry to go on, I do understand what you're saying, Town Council is not governing the school committee, but when one of our elected boards abandons its responsibilities, and these are important issues, I feel as a citizen, it is, I have the right, and in a way, even the responsibility, to bring it forward at whatever forum there is, and you guys at least have the decency to be here, to listen, to communicate, to be respectful, and so for all those things, I do appreciate what you have here, and I don't know how we can get it to the other board, but I hope that you guys really ponder on it and see what, you know, continue to think about it, don't just close the book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol?
I just wanted to respond, Jonathan, I just want to say that the norm, I would say, with most elected officials is that they fulfill their obligations, and they do attend, and I think you can see that through even most of the school committee, and the Town Council, and the legislature, but, so it's the exception to the, to the rule that doesn't attend, and generally, I would say, looking at it, instead of just looking at it, like, from our town point of view, statewide, when someone can't fulfill their obligations for whatever the reason, they either resign, or they don't run for reelection, and, I mean, that, that's where, that's where it all comes, comes back, you know? So you just, that's where it all levels out, and that's, that's your recourse, a remedy, but it usually works itself out, and, and that's what I've seen in other, other states' officials, like with the legislature, or mostly the legislature, you see that, but, anyway, I just want to make that comment, that's, it's usually the exception to the rule, that someone doesn't attend most of the meetings, so.
Jim?
I certainly agree with Carol on that, that right now is the only way, Jonathan, I guess, election time, things leveling out, which is really sad. Jonathan does have a very strong point, though, how in the world can someone vote on personnel issues, budget, you name it? Frankly, should have abstained in all the votes, that's what really throws a cloud into all this, and I remember, I think I'd heard that when the school committee held a public hearing on adding two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the budget, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a budget, I think there were two or three folks in the audience to engage. I mean, I mean, that's really incredible, I certainly would like to thank the school committee, is, of all things in the education world, should be engaging the public, and should be engaging discussion and debate. So I, I agree, I certainly have that worry, and, but Carol's right, when it comes down to it, the elections have a way of, in most cases, evening things out, but thank you for your letters.
Any further discussion here at the table? Do we have a motion?
I move to place Communication F on file.
Second.
Have motion and a second, last minute discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Next on the agenda is comments from interested citizens. Somebody would like to come to the microphone? Just state your name for the record, please.
I'm going to apologize for coming up a third time, so I do apologize.
No, this, no, you had the right with your two letters of communication, and this is a different form.
Thank you, all right.
No apology needed.
Maybe this could have been tied in with one of the other, my other thoughts I brought forward, but, you know, there was a lot of, there was a brouhaha, you know, as it's kind of been reported, and, you know, I think a lot of that was kind of a manufactured controversy, you know, trying to create something where there really isn't much, and, so whatever, that's politics, you know, I'd like to look forward, and hopefully, you know, politics don't have to be in this chamber, because it really is not appropriate, and especially when there's innuendos and allegations made against, you know, longstanding people that are here. So, but, just to kind of put on the record, that, you know, pretty much most of that uproar was coming from members of the local Democratic Town Committee, and, do you have any concern? Yes, go ahead, thank you.
I would like to say, another thing we discussed, Jonathan-
Yes, thank you.
And you'll appreciate this.
Thank you.
Is to have repetitious innuendos, and we'd really like to eliminate that.
Okay.
It doesn't make any of us look good.
I agree.
And to keep bringing up things like that is-
I'm going in-
Helpful to anyone.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yes, going in a new direction, as has been mentioned in my previous comments about school committee, you know, people that have brought forward these concerns to this chamber, to your board, and maybe some are legitimate, or not, but if they are concerned with how things run, the school committee is a mess, and many of those members are on the local Democratic Town Committee, and so maybe the people who have brought this, these concerns here, should, I've got the list, and they should bring their hard work to have good representation and proper decision-making over the school committee, and then help me with that load. Thank you, I think that's new. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Polly. Other comments from interested citizens?
I'm sorry, I missed that, with Polly, what, what's going on?
I just want, asked for a clarification, thank you, her, for bringing a clarification to the table about the-
How we were going to deal with repetition.
The repetition.
Well, I didn't see-
That's how I took it.
First time Jonathan mentioned that tonight, so I, I don't see where the repetition comes, comes into play.
I think it was from the last, the last meeting.
From the last meeting, which I didn't think we needed to go into.
From the last meeting, that's how I took it. But that's, that's good that you brought that up, Jim, that's what we want here at the table.
Don't agree.
Other comments from interested citizens. I have one date here, it is tomorrow night, the South County branch of the YMCA of Greater Providence is hosting an event to learn more about our commitment to strengthen the community for healthy places by design, so hopefully we'll see a full school committee there, and is at Trios from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Will we all be attending? I'm sorry, school committee, see, you've got me thinking, school committee.
I don't know why you're telling them to go.
Town Council. My daughter corrects me all the time. My daughter corrects me all the time when I say, school committee, town council.
Do not be there, I'll be there.
Polly, no?
I'm trying to go, yes.
I'm trying to go too, I have a couple of work things.
All right. Does anybody have any other dates or any events that they have attended? Like to share? No? All right. Seeing none, I'll move to the town manager's report unless there's any further discussion.
The only item I wanted to speak on tonight is the meeting schedule for the week of April Council has regular council meeting on the 9th of April. On the 10th of April, that is the night that has been scheduled by Coastal Resource Management Council to hear the town's application dealing with the proposed improvements on Mattoonik Beach Road, more specifically, the installation of the sheet pile wall within the right-of-way itself. We've also been advised verbally, but not anything that's reached us as far as an actual public, public notice, that the reclassification of the beach would also be heard on April 10th as well. Again, that meeting will be at 6:00 PM at Carlos Auditorium at the Bay Campus on South Ferry Road in Narragansett. Because that meeting came in on the 10th of April, the council was required to reschedule one of the two public hearings required for the budget schedule. The budget hearing that was originally scheduled for April 10th has now been moved to April 12th, Thursday, the 12th. So in summary, you've got a council meeting, regular council meeting on Monday, you've got CRMC on Tuesday, you've got the first budget hearing on Wednesday, and the second budget hearing on Thursday. I'm still looking for something for Friday night for you.
Thank you.
As of yet, we haven't come up with anything.
Only if you're treating for dinner.
I'd be glad to answer any questions on either of the two reports that have been filed since the last report, if there are any. If not, I yield to the solicitor.
Thank you, Steve. Town solicitor's report?
Again, unless there are any questions, I'm all set.
Thank you. Which brings us to appointments and we have a few.
I move that we reappoint Bernard Poppy to the Assessment Board of Review, which is a three-year term. His term expired in January of 2012, which would take him to January 2015.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero.
And next, I would move that we reappoint Stephanie Ann Osborne to the Zoning Board of Review. Her term expires March 2012. It's a three-year term, so that would take her to March 2015.
We have a second.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. And we will be setting up a couple of interviews for our next meeting for boards and we are just waiting for some respond, Economic Development Committee members to respond with their terms. Which moves us to New Business Item 13A. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Sunbelt Rentals Incorporated, doing business as Case of New England, 800A Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for a JR B grapple bucket rake, 350 GBR, including installation in an amount not to exceed $35,262, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated March 9th, 2012, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Debris Management Grapple.
Recommendation is to award to the low bidder, Sunbelt Rentals Inc., doing business as Casey, Case of New England, at $35,262. This is a specialized debris management equipment component. What it is, is it's, it fits on the town's front-end loader. It allows us to be able to move debris and to be able to use an articulating arm within the unit itself to be able to carry the materials or to place it into vehicles. Certainly, its major use would be for post-storm debris removal, but it would also have other activities as far as the movement of materials at the highway garage. This was budgeted in the town's capital improvement program for the 1112 year. There is sufficient funds within the overall budget to be able to accommodate this purchase.
Motion to approve New Business Item A. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Which brings us to New Business Item E. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to 146 Supply Center Incorporated, Route 146, PO Box 209, Millbury, Massachusetts, for the purchase of a John Deere 1600 Series II tri-deck wide area mower and John Deere 1445 front mount mower in accordance with all bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed $69,402, including trade-in, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated March 20th, 2012, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Wide Area Mower, Front Mount Mower, and Utility Sand Groomer.
Two pieces of equipment that are proposed for acquisition. One is a wide area mower, which is a large mower that's used for large fields such as at Tucker Town. Second is the front-end mower, which would also be used in some of the large fields, but can be used in some of the smaller areas as well. The wide area mower, we're recommending lowest qualified bidder with 146 supply. On the front-end mower, we're looking at that being the second-low bidder. We have moved to, to go to the, away from the low bidder based on the, that bid not meeting the prescribed bid specifications. So we're asking for approval in a dollar amount not to exceed the $69,402 for the two pieces. The wide area mower will cost $47,123.27. That's based on the initial cost net of the trade-in allowance. And the front-end mower net price will be $22,278 for the total $69,401.27.
Thank you.
Move approval of New Business Item E.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New Business Item F is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Turf Products Corporation, 157 Moody Road, Enfield, Connecticut, for the purchase of a Toro Sand Pro Utility Sand Grooming Vehicle in accordance with all bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed $15,943, including trade-in, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated March 20th, 2012, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Wide Area Mower, Front Mount Mower, and Utility Sand Groomer.
Low bid was Allen Seed on this item by approximately $400. Recommendation is to go to the second-low bidder, Turf Products, as outlined on the agenda. This equipment, the equipment for the low bid does not meet bid specifications. Only the Toro will meet the requirements of the department because it has interchangeable grooming components that can be used with the other in-ground, in-ground grooming machine that we have. So recommendation is to go with the second-low bidder, Turf Products, for those reasons.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve New Business Item F. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Any further comments before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Meeting adjourned at 8:55.